We'll open the school committee meeting for August 11th. If we could stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do introduction of members.
Tenoville Millville.
Carrie Goddett Blackstone.
Dan Keith Blackstone.
Aaron Zeman Millville.
Charles Dunton Blackstone.
Tammy Lemieux Blackstone.
Erin Vannaco Millville.
And Jason DeFalto Superintendent.
Thank you. And I'm looking for a motion to approve consent agenda A, which are the never-ending warrants and the minutes of meeting for July 11th.
So moved. Second.
Actually, minutes of meeting for executive sessions and actually they're not doing this.
No, no, just the.
So now, yeah, cross that out. So consent agenda A, so moved by Tammy and second by Carrie. Any comments or discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous, thank you. Public forum. Anyone that would like to address us? School committee items, and we will move right along to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. It's very nice to see everyone. It has been a very, very busy summer, as I know the committee is well aware. And tonight I have some very important updates. First, starting with three positions that we've been talking about, one a little more recently as far as the middle school principal vacancy is concerned, but the other two we've been talking about for some time now. So in your packets, I have placed an update that really outlines where we are with each one of these positions. And so I'm going to start with just the interim business manager. And of course, for those, our family and friends tuning in from home, to just give a thorough update on these key vacancies that we have. So with our interim business manager at the July 11th school committee meeting, as the committee recalls, you had approved a reposting looking for an interim business manager. That posting did go up, and we did have a few applicants and did three screenings and forwarded one of those candidates to a smaller interview committee of the assistant superintendent search committee. Erin, I think you served on that, and then you served on the interim, right? And then you did the assistant superintendent search. So thank you both, both Erins, very much for your service on that. But we were able to forward one candidate to the committee. The committee did interview the candidate and felt that she was a strong fit. And I did have an opportunity to since meet with her again and have had a chance to do some reference checks. She's a very experienced candidate who is retired from the work now for about five years, but has been a business manager and assistant superintendent for regional school districts. And in her role as assistant superintendent, she served as the chief financial officer and chief operating officer. So she knows the work. And she comes very recommended from those that have been in the field for quite some time that had a chance to work with her when she was in the work, which is really great. So for next steps, we are going to meet formally next Friday. And we've set an agenda together, so we've carved out a couple of hours for us to really start walking through all the budget documents, contracts, all of those operational pieces that are going to be really important for her to get her arms around. I have invited her to attend the leadership team retreat. So she's going to come, I think on the Monday, the 22nd, and spend some time with the leadership team and get to know them. You know, even though she'll be with us at most a year, every day matters. So it's, you know, I need to make sure that the connections with the team are going to go as we are thinking they're going to go. And then after that, actually, she's going to meet with Erin and Tammy as the chair and vice chair to really give them kind of an opportunity to just process some questions that they might have with them. And then if all goes as planned, we'll have her in front of the school committee to introduce her to all of you on August 25th to review and hopefully approve her contract, and then she can start Monday, the 29th. So lots of, lots of transition work, but again, each day is important and matters. And so we're not going to rush anything. We want to make sure that this is the right fit and that she's well-versed in where we are as a system and what we're looking for. I can tell you, she's really eager. She's texting, you know, back and forth with me a lot, and she's sending emails, and she's really into learning about the district, and she's watched our school committee meetings. And so it's good. I mean, that shows that she's really interested in the school system. So we're excited about that opportunity. Next is the lead coach. I have an update on that position as well. On Tuesday, this Tuesday, the 9th, we had an opportunity to review all the applicants, to interview a couple of candidates. Again, we have a, we had a committee that went through that process, and I'm really grateful for the teachers that jumped on board to do that, but also Carrie Purcell, who is working, helping school systems launch their school year essentially all over the country. And she's jumped on to every interview that we've needed her to, which has been really, really helpful. So she's been a big, a big help in the screening process. They did, the committee did forward on a finalist to me that I did have a chance to meet with today and really enjoyed my time with her. She came in, we met for a little over an hour, we talked a lot about the work and about where we are as a school system. And so I have a little more legwork to do on my end as far as just reference checking and some other pieces, but we do have a strong finalist for that position, who is a very seasoned and veteran educator. And I hope to have that individual in front of the committee as well on the 25th. And then our middle school principal. So as you're aware, that vacancy came up pretty quickly and somewhat unexpected and not necessarily a great time of the year for that to happen. However, we did put our posting out and we did review and screen 10 applicants. Of those 10, and Carrie, I think you served in that committee, thank you so much for that. Of those 10, the committee interviewed four and then sent one of those four forward to meet with me, and I am meeting with her tomorrow. Although I did share with her that I'll be coming from the Boys and Girls Club after grilling 450 steak and cheese sandwiches, so I could, you know, told her it's going to probably be a little more of an informal discussion, but I want to meet with her this week because if things go well with our discussion tomorrow and some of the reference and background checks, I would like to schedule some time for her next week, again, still as a finalist, but to be able to meet with the staff and give her an opportunity to meet with families and students. I know we're in August, but I don't want to rush this. I want to make sure that we have the right person in each one of these positions. The positions are just too important. I will say the feedback that I received from the search committee on this particular candidate was very strong.
Yeah.
So that was really good to hear. So we are in, we're in really good shape as far as filling these positions are concerned. None of them are across the finish line yet, but they should be within the next couple of weeks. And I hope, again, at the August 25th school committee meeting, to have all three of them here. And if the candidate for the middle school principal search is not the right candidate, we will do an interim if we need to, we'll go back to the drawing board, repost, and start the process over. One of the things I think our community knows is we're not going to settle, and we'll, you know, we'll leave a position vacant before we just put a person in it. Later on in our conversation this evening, I'll go through the other vacancies. You have a vacancy list we actually put together for you by school, so you can see exactly what's vacant in each building. We can, we can process that, and I can share that with our families at home if they're curious to see where things are there. So let me pause here and see if there are any questions or considerations or things I'm not thinking of regarding these three positions.
Anyone have any questions?
I would like to thank Jill PG. She was instrumental in the middle school principal search, and I know she's had a hand in running the others as well. She got everything lined up, and it was a tight timeline.
It was, for sure. Thanks for saying that. I appreciate that.
May I ask on the, in the business manager? She's retired for five years, so why did she turn, decide to retire? And is she trying to get back into it because she doesn't feel that she's ready to retire? Or is she looking at it as a short-term thing?
Yeah, she's looking at it as a short-term piece. She's, you know, I think she, the way she kind of explained it to me was she's loved her, her retirement, and, but she's looking to get involved, and she wants to reengage. And she said, one of the things that drew her, she actually emailed me directly. She didn't apply through school spring, and she actually sent me an email. She saw our assistant superintendent post, the first post, and said, gosh, if this was a different time, you know, I would, she's like, this sounds perfect. That's the work I love to do. I'd apply for that. But she's retired, and she didn't want to work, you know, go back to the workforce permanently. And then she saw the interim posting, she watched the school committee meeting, and then she sent me an email. And she said, you know, you guys seem like you really have it together. You know, this is your school committee, seems great, you guys have a good relationship. I see this is what you're looking for. If you think I can be helpful, let me know. And so Jill PG and I scheduled a, like a screening conversation with her. We had a couple of, that evening, and she was, she was really good. I mean, she was very positive, she was very knowledgeable, and really seemed to come at it from a place of she just wants to be as helpful as she can be in that.
This is like, this is common, very common nowadays, where you'll see it in town administrators and things like where they're retired, they're only, they can only make so much.
Right.
So they fill interim positions, which actually helps in many cases, because they actually, with their knowledge and experience they bring, the transition is that much, you know, easier, and it lifts the burden off of, you know, everything that has been thrown on Jason's lap, you know, with Matt missing. But it is very, very common that now, more now than ever, that retirees are coming back.
Right. No, I just, I heard you speak to the fact that she's been the super before with the business background and the CFO, so I didn't know if she was looking to really get back into it. And a year from now, she's going to say, okay, I'll take both?
Oh, I see, yeah. I would be, I mean, I guess, you know, you never can rule anything out in terms of what people are looking for.
Right.
But what we will offer for a contract is, that I will ask the committee to review and approve, is essentially a one-year contract with an early exit clause if we find somebody that can start sooner than later. She was very comfortable with that. So I get the sense that she isn't necessarily looking for the long haul, but more so to, like kind of, Dan, as you were saying, to kind of, you know, pitch in and see if she can be helpful to the system in any way. And actually, that is the exact language she is, she continued to use, you know, these are my skills, if I can be helpful in using them, I'd be happy to, you know, join the team in whatever capacity.
Any other questions about the three positions? I just have one for you. The middle school principal, how is this building looking for opening?
Yes.
I think a lot of parents are probably wondering, with that transition or vacancy being there so close, what is it going to look like for the kids?
So Ms. Kurt and I have been meeting regularly since she had shared her resignation with me. As recent as 1 o'clock today, or 12 o'clock today, rather, sorry, we went through her whole exit plan. And part of the exit plan includes all of the school year opening and launch, from scheduling to hiring to professional development to all the ordering, materials, resources, all of that is either done or will be done before she leaves on August 25th. The schedule, which I know is, is everybody always kind of anxious at this time of year, the elementary schedule, as you know, went out last week. The middle school and high school schedule will go out together. And I say go out because the, the middle school kids get their schedules when they show up for open door day, but they're actually live in Aspen. The 7th and 8th graders have already figured that out. So once we turn on the high school schedules, which the kids just log in and check, the middle school schedules are live too. So you can't go live with one and not the other, you know, without the other ones. So they both will be live next week, they're just finalizing the date. But they're looking for Thursday or Friday of next week, but all the schedules will be live.
Are you waiting for E S Y to close?
Yeah, waiting for that to close. And then we had to roll over Aspen, which should be done tomorrow, but honestly, there's always an issue when you're trying to roll over your student information system, so. And then what the high school has done, they have already run every student's schedule, and they have hand-checked, Denise, Ms. Breenzie has come in and she's hand-checked all 400 and some odd schedules to make sure there's no duplicates or issues. So those will all be fixed. There's only, there's about a dozen, I think. Those will be fixed before the schedules go live. And at the middle school, all of the frameworking is done, and the students are in their master schedule, but they haven't run the schedules to check them yet. That's the start of next week. So we should be in very good shape as far as the opening goes.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, of course. And if there are no other questions on that, that's probably a really good segue to the next item on the agenda. There are two different handouts for the start of the school year, for the 22, 23 school year, which I cannot wait. Very excited to have all the students and staff back. But let me just run through a few dates for our folks tuning in at home, and, but to also say that these will be emailed to families tomorrow. So the materials that are in the school committee packet regarding, more so that, like the color-coded by school, these will be going out to families so that they, they know when all the different important dates are for them to kind of mark their calendars now. But as far as the district launch, we will be starting on the 22nd and 23rd of August, so in a couple of weeks, with our district leadership retreat. We're really eager for that. As you recall, we had our first day, it's a three-day retreat, we do one in June and then two in August. So we had our last retreat in June. And we'll have our two other days, Monday, the 22nd, and Tuesday, the 23rd. Thursday and Friday, we will be launching our new staff orientation, so we're really excited about that. And again, for our new members, that's who, we actually have all of our new staff together. And we have a really tight kind of agenda put together for the two days, because as you can imagine, there's a lot that we want to, to spend time on with our new staff. But the basic overview is they're focused on the communities, and I'll talk about that in a second. They're focused on the students and actually looking at the student data for the students they're going to be serving. They're spending time with the curriculum, with their principal, and with their mentors. So there's a lot of focus on making sure that when they come on the 29th with everybody, they at least have had an opportunity to have a good overview of key pieces of the work. But I will share that, because I interview all of the candidates for every position, most of them have already started. Not all of them, but most of them have already started, have met with the principals, starting to review the curriculum, they have their logins. So that's great. So this new kind of class of, of staff will be well-prepared for the students' return. One of the things that is really important is that they get a good understanding of our community. So we actually schedule a bus tour of Blackstone and Millville that Neil in Telstone and Keith Ducharme run, and myself, although I really like watching the two of them banter and go through the, kind of the good old days. And the tour takes about an hour and a half, but we truly, we drive from every corner through Millville, through Blackstone and back, because we want the community, the new staff to see our community and understand the community that they're serving, our families, our students. We also share with them where to get coffee, where not to get coffee, where to order lunch, right, all kind of the important things. But that has been something, we've heard a lot of really good feedback from the new staff, that like, that was actually really helpful for them, because they can put a visual to, you know, when we talk about a particular neighborhood or a part of the town, they're like, oh, yeah, I remember that, we did that on the bus tour, I'm familiar with that part of the, of the town. So we do some, some exercises like that with, with them as well.
Once it go by, I can go out and wave.
Yeah, for sure. I think that's the first day, I believe we're going at 11 o'clock, I think. 11 to 12:30, I think, on the, on the Thursday. We are also looking very closely at our, at our staff mentoring program, and we're looking at doing a real big reset on that and trying to think very creatively about how to help our new teachers, but also really tap into additional support beyond their mentors from their colleagues. And we're looking at putting together a variety of workshops and different experiences that new staff may need to plug into above and beyond what they get from their mentor and their regular building PD. That's still under construction, but I just want the committee to know that we're taking a very serious look at our mentoring program, because I do think we can do it better, and I do think that there's more we can do to help support our new faculty. So we're eager to take that on. We do everything with the program that we, that we need to, we're from like a compliance place, but I really think there's more we can do. So I'll have more information on that as we continue to build that model out. And on Monday, the 29th, and Tuesday, the 30th, all of our staff will be together for the launch of our school year. We're going to do the 29th, all in their buildings, we're going to have a welcome-back video for me. And then on the 30th, we're going to have folks around lunchtime, all the staff at the high school. We have our chorus that's going to perform, our marching band's going to do a little performance as well. We have some students that are going to recite some poetry, really try to get people excited and vigor, and invigorated for the new school year. And there's nothing better than the students to do that. So we've invited students to attend that, and we'll also do the years of recognition. So we'll do, you know, we recognize teachers that have been with us for, I think it's 15, 20, 25, 30 years and beyond. And so we'll do flowers for them and recognize them in front of their peers, and it should be a really productive, really positive first couple of days. And then the students in grades one through 12 return on Wednesday, the 31st, and our kindergarten students return on September 1st. So that is kind of the launch of the district. And then the second sheet, and I certainly won't read all of these to you, but again, these will be emailed out to all of our families tomorrow. But these are all of the upcoming kind of start of the school year stuff that parents are always wondering about, like, when does I meet the teacher? And is there an ice cream social or report cards? Or, so we go up to very early November. And there's a bunch of activities, of course, as you know, that are happening, but these are like the big, kind of save the dates for parents as they get their toe in the water of the new year. So we're hoping that our families will find this helpful as we launch.
So this is going email tomorrow?
Yes. Yep. So that way, the thought was you can print it, put it on your refrigerator, or just keep it in your email like I do, and go back and search when you, when you're wondering about a particular date or something. So that'll go out tomorrow.
Okay, move forward? Oh, yes.
Okay. The next item on my report is a request to the school committee to increase our 21st Century Learning Center hourly teacher rate. As you know, that is a self-sustaining program, that is $173,000 a year grant that we wrote and were awarded, so we get $173,000 a year for three years. So it's, it's a very significant amount of money. We are in the midst of our summer program now, which is going really well. Recruiting for the school year program's been hard. The summer program, as you know, we pay 45 an hour for our staff. During the school year, we've left it at 35. In conversation with Dr. Remka, who oversees the program for the complex, she's having a hard time recruiting staff for the after-school time, so she would, like, she requested to me, which I thought was reasonable, for that program only to move the hourly rate to 45 an hour from 35. It is a grant-funded program that frankly, their budget can hold that. Nothing comes out of our local budget. So I'm asking the committee this evening to review and hopefully approve the request for that increase.
So we have a motion written for us, I'll read it. Motion for the 21st Century Learning Center hourly teacher rate to increase the certified teacher hourly rate for the 21st Century Learning Center hourly teacher rate program at the JFK AFM Complex from $35 to $45 per hour for the school year 22, 23. The program is paid fully by the 21st Century Grant.
So moved.
Motion made by Dan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chuck. Any questions or discussion? Tammy?
My worry is that this then trickles down to everything else where no one signs up until you increase the hourly rate by $10. So that's just the worry I put out there. I understand that this isn't necessarily our budgeted money, but it's still money that's in our, you know, plan. So that's my only worry, that you sort of set a precedent on one program that trickles down to others that has a long impact and including at negotiation time next time around.
And my follow-up with a question on that is how, how many other programs are at $35 an hour?
The rest of them are budgeted on that.
The rest of them?
Yeah, that are, and those are all district funded. This is the, at this time, this is the only after-school program that we are running that is, that is grant-funded, fully grant-funded. The rest of them are funded by our, you know, combination of user fees and if it's athletic program or music program and our local budget, or it's just straight local budget.
And earlier on, a couple of months ago, when we moved that to $45 for the summer program, that was a grant program as well?
That's right.
Okay. So that's the direction it's going, going to be going.
I was just going to add that, that unfortunately, it might just be, as you're saying, setting a precedent, but are we, is this what we're going to end up at because of the, the way of the economy?
Kind of set the precedent on the last one, so.
Hopefully, we can even out somewhere.
Oh, so there's two programs that are covered under this, the summer program and then after school, right?
Right.
So they're basically asking for us to pay both outside of the normal hour programs the same rate of 45.
It's the same, it goes 12 months, the program, yeah.
And it wasn't actually something that someone asked for, it's because we were having trouble recruiting, right?
Right.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you.
And the last item on my report this evening is my evaluation for this past school year. And I know that this year, we are doing things a little bit different. Actually, it feels a lot, a lot different, in a good way, I mean, but in terms of timeline and process and how we laid all of this out, even the structure in which you notice no big binders in front of you this year. Instead, we hyperlinked all the, all of the evidence to the actual PowerPoint itself. And so, but I'm very excited this evening to be walking through this slide deck together in front of the committee and the community, because while I have the pleasure of being evaluated publicly, publicly on all of this work, I will say that this is a, this is a culmination of everybody's work. And I know the returning committee has heard me say that multiple times, but I truly sincerely mean that. And I, you know, I've shared this presentation with our leadership team, I know some of them have shared it with their, with their leader, their, their building-based instructional leadership teams. And so this really is a culmination of, of the good work of our staff. I just have the pleasure and the honor of presenting it. So with that, as you know, we always start with our district improvement strategy, which ironically, that was actually one of the goals that we'll talk about in a moment, which was redeveloping our district blueprint, which we have done and the school committee graciously approved at the end of June. But again, you will see that our work is anchored to our overall improvement focus for the district. So this evening, the way that we're going to kind of walk through at least the organizational structure of this, and this is more for our family and friends that are, that are listening in, but is through a series of goals, standards, and indicators within a standard. And so the school committee may recall that in October of '21, after some discussion, it was, it was decided and approved that underneath these four standards that are in the superintendent evaluation rubric, that these indicators that are listed as A and B under each would be the particular areas of focus that the committee wanted me to really hone in on last school year, so school year 21, 22. And I would just say as an aside, one of the things that I like about the way we do the evaluation here, and I will say it is incredibly unique, because most superintendents are evaluated from September, October to June. That, school systems don't run that way anymore. They just don't. We're a 12-month operation, that should just be a seamless, ongoing body of work. What I like about this is that our committee acknowledges that and they get it, and that's how this evaluation is set up. It's just an ongoing body of work. There's not a hard stop in June, like everything, you know, closes. There's not a hard stop in June, like everything, you know, closes down. And so while we're discussing this in August, this is for last school year. But I will include a couple of just kind of additional pieces of information that the committee might find and the community might find interesting as we talk about some of these components. So our first goal was a professional practice goal, and it was anchored around our district strategic plan. And I'm not going to read the goals to everybody, but kind of the headline here was to get our new improvement strategy in place. And so as you have seen in your evidence, you, on June 23rd, approved that. So our new district improvement strategy, our Blueprint 2.0, has been approved and is in place. We are working on our launch. That's part of our leadership retreat work in terms of getting this information into the hands of the community to really help our families and our students truly understand what our improvement strategy is all about. Although I do think most people now, if you ask them, can tell you the fidget spinner thing, they'll tell you the what, the how, the whole child, like they actually can recite that back, which is good. That means we're doing what we need to do to help people kind of, you know, memorize that, if you will, remember the work we're doing. The two other pieces of information that are really important are our action plans and our monitoring committee. So both of those are still being developed, our quarter one action plans, right? So the strategy that the school committee approved, we've built out our first quarter of the school year and what that, what those actions look like. That's really important because those actions are linked right back to the school improvement plans. So our district, here are the action steps, what does this look like in our buildings? And what are the nuances in each of our buildings that we have to adjust this and modify that for? So that work has happened. They're not finished yet, but they're not expected to be. And our monitoring committee, once we have our lead coach in place, will be putting that structure in place that we can actually check in on our blueprint quarterly to make sure we're making the progress that we expect. But as far as evidence is concerned, the piece that's hyperlinked here for the committee's review is the approved blueprint, which I know, you know, you all just did that in June, so it's very much front and center. You'll also notice for the mid-cycle in March, for our committee members that came in after the mid-cycle was done, we hyperlinked the evidence there too. So if you're curious, you know, what was, what was used for the mid-cycle evaluation, you can just click the hyperlink and get a sense of what the evidence was for that. And so you'll see again, that concept of this being that ongoing body of work. Our second goal, also a district improvement goal, is focused around academic acceleration. And we always bucket this in two places, the curriculum and the instruction. So kind of the what and the how of the work. And we use a variety of, you can tell that there's, there's a lot here because this is the core of our work, right? We're a teaching and learning institution. So there's a lot of information here. And again, for our members that came in after March, you can go back and see what was used in the mid-cycle. But for the end of cycle, which is March till now, we did hyperlink quite a few pieces of evidence that really showed the true work of our teachers and our staff in this, in this particular standard. I do want to just share a couple pieces, and I don't know if, Jesse, I don't know, do you want me to come up over there or?
I got it.
Jesse, if you can just go to the end of your data meetings, the celebration and plan, that's the second bullet on the end of cycle, and click that hyperlink there. And again, and I know the committee has this, so it's more so for our families and friends at home. But it's.
Don't even touch the mouse. All right, which one?
Go to the second bullet on the end of cycle.
To the right.
On the right side, and the second bullet, right there, that guy. If you can click that. If this proves too tricky, I'll just talk through it. But the reason that I had asked Jesse to click on this particular piece of evidence is because I really want the school committee to see the work. Like, I want you to see the authentic work. It's so hard because you're evaluating the performance of, you know, of me and our system on our meetings and whatever you hear and whatever you get in updates, and but I want you to see the work. Like, this is the stuff that we spend a significant amount of our time on because this is what's going to make an impact on students. And what you're looking at here is an end-of-the-year data meeting that we had. This particular piece of evidence is an example from the JFK AFM Complex. And I can share, one of the things that was so impactful to me about this particular data meeting was Dr. Remka probably said five words. This meeting was run by her teachers. And that is really important when we think about ownership of the work and we look at the results that the students actually were able to make. And we're going to look at a big picture result toward the end of the slide deck. So I know this is really just one snapshot, but what I really appreciated, and I should mention, when we have our data meetings, there's no template that teachers have to fill out for these meetings. There's no, you know, particular process that we ask schools to use. This is all organic. So the schools put this information together in a way for them that makes sense for them. So when we look at the high schools in a minute, you'll see theirs looks nothing like this. And Millville uses a big spreadsheet. They don't use PowerPoints, they don't use, you know, the actual, high school uses data tables. They put it all in a spreadsheet by class, by student, beginning, middle, and end, and all the progress monitored. It's just, it's important to mention that because everybody has a different approach in terms of how they look at, review, process, and plan with the data that they have. Jesse, thank you for that. And if you wouldn't mind, Jess, just one more piece. Right underneath that is the high school, high school, middle of year to end of year. If you can just click that. And again, you can see already, you can see the difference, right? This is how the high school organizes their results. It's just, it's just, you know, same, you know, same information, but they just consume it differently. And again, at the end-of-year data meeting with the high school team, the majority of the conversation was the teachers. What I really liked about the, the meeting with the high school staff was that they talked about patterns and trends within their own practice that they noticed made an impact on student achievement. One of the teachers actually said, you know, I used the X practice, and I'll share those practices with you in a second, at the middle of, at the beginning of year, and I had talked about the data, I reviewed it with the students, and we saw a really nice increase at middle of year, but I didn't do that again when the middle of the year results came out. I didn't sit with the kids and talk to them. I didn't go over the results with them. I didn't make time for that, and they didn't do as well. And so we were talking about that piece around student ownership, right? We want the students to own their results, to understand where they are, know where they need to improve, and where their strengths are. So those are the kinds of conversations that we, that we want to get to. And that's, I'm very proud to say, that's where the majority of our schools are. They're having those conversations. We've built the systems and structures through our instructional leadership team meetings, through our professional learning communities, our PLC meetings, through our staff meetings with our coaches, and this is where we're at. And when you see the results, at least the STAR results, we're seeing some really nice progress. What that translates to at MCAS, I don't know yet. I'll actually know next week. But just to give you a sense, again, from a, from a structural place, the high schools look different. They track it differently, but they own the data, they own the students, and they plan out their next steps. Thanks for that, Jess. So one of the things that's included in as a piece of evidence that I wanted to just share, because I think it's, this is probably the most important piece of everything that is up here. In those end-of-year data meetings, we met with each school, with each instructional leadership team, and I asked the same questions. And one of those questions was for the team, the leadership team in the meeting, to articulate, what are the biggest changes, like what are the biggest levers of change you pulled to help get the results you got? What was it that you did? Every school, they use slightly different language, they all said the same stuff. So I actually wrote a summary to them in mid-June, and I shared it with the leadership team and asked them to send it out to their ILTs, their instructional leadership teams. But this is what they told us, that the response to intervention blocks, or RTI blocks, that are flexible, skill-focused, time-bound, with ways of measuring student progress before, during, and after each RTI session was a, was a game changer. That made a real big difference. And all we're talking about is checking the student's skills before, giving them an intervention that matches where they're at, progress monitoring that, and then checking in at the end to see where their growth is. That was the first. The second, that I heard resounding from all four buildings, the teachers shared, teachers and staff are collaborating with purpose and intent, specifically looking at data and student work and using it to think through how to best individualize student learning for the kids sitting in front of them. They use different words, but that's what they all said. But I want to, I want to underscore one piece because two different schools said purpose and intent with collaboration. They said, we've had PLCs before, we sat around, we said, what are you doing today? What are you doing today? What are you doing today? We kind of checked in. This is not that. That's what we heard. This is very purposeful conversation, looking at student work and planning, going back to our classrooms, implementing it, and coming back as a team to talk about how it worked. That is the power of the instructional coach. The instructional coach is working with our teachers to facilitate that. Teachers are busy, they don't have time to coordinate all that. But that's a piece of what our instructional coaches do. And the teachers have been super, super collaborative on that work. The third piece that they shared was teachers are learning deeper and understanding better their content, curriculum, materials, and resources. Remember, we've changed science programs, right? Four years ago, we had put a new science program in place, literacy, we needed to put a new literacy program in place, we did math, we're doing math now, and social studies is up this year. So teachers have really rolled up their sleeves to learn the materials, learn the resources, and then adapt them for the kids in front of them. If the committee remembers the audit we had done by Johns Hopkins University five years ago, one of the things the teachers told us was, we are spending an absurd amount of time trying to find stuff. We're trying to look for lessons, we're trying to find materials, we're on, teachers pay teachers. And the problem with that is, we don't want teachers spending our time on that. We want to give them the material and let them adapt it for the kids in front of them. So that's what we've been doing, is identifying those high-quality materials, research-based materials, and letting them adapt that. And everybody loves it, and you'll hear things like, they took my autonomy, like, well, not necessarily, you just can't do the Penguin unit you always like to do. Like, you don't necessarily, think of another way to do that, right? Think of another place to integrate that. Because as a parent of a third grader, it shouldn't matter what third grade class that student sent. It shouldn't matter what, it shouldn't. Every classroom in that third grade should have the same exposure to the same curriculum. And that was not always the case. So we're seeing that, teachers are really seeing that and really studying and working to understand better the materials in front of them and using those for the students effectively. Students are more involved in their learning by meeting with teachers to discuss their academic performance. That was one piece that I just mentioned, that teacher who really shared, you know, she saw the value in that just from the beginning to middle of year and then middle to end, like the huge discrepancy in student performance in the same kids. She just didn't, you know, she's like, I just didn't do that practice that time, and I realize I should have. Students own it more. And then setting goals around, students setting goals around their own learning. In some schools, not all yet, but in some schools, we heard that the teachers, in one school in particular, are actually conferencing with parents multiple times a year and checking in with them on the student results. So they're looking at those STAR results with the parent, saying, hey, here's where we're at, this is what your kid's doing, this is what we need to focus on. Don't need you to do anything, we just want you to be aware. And, you know, if you see your kid struggling with multiplying, you know, multi-digit numbers, see if you can give him a hand. I mean, they're quick, you know, short kind of check-ins, but that made a big difference. And then the last thing that we heard was that the schools have come together, and this is the focus of schools' work, this is what we've been working on. So I was really glad to hear this. But coming together around their instructional practices. So each school has picked a couple of practices that they're really focused on. And they brought up some examples like ACE. And we heard from three of the four buildings, the importance of finding the balance between more complex critical thinking type problems and procedural work. Right? Procedural stuff is the stuff, let's, like, we all learned at school, like, here's a worksheet with 30 problems, sit at your desk, and you have six minutes, fill out as many as you can, and, right? Like, we all did that. So the idea isn't that you have to necessarily throw that away because practice is helpful, but how do you balance that with, okay, now let's take the procedural stuff and let's apply it to something that's really hard, and I need you to think about this. Right? It's like, more like word problems, is kind of the way to think about it. So our teachers are really working hard to find that balance. So I just wanted to share that piece because that was an important part.
Go ahead, Tammy.
Jason, what month does beginning of year data happen in?
The month of September.
Okay.
And the windows open for the entire month. So it's not the first day, right? But we open the window right away, and then the schools plan whatever schedule is most helpful for them.
And so, sorry, you'll get to some of this, I know, but, so the kids that are in second grade that we're seeing their data for right now, some of them have undergone or went through summer programming, and then they'll be tested in September. So in theory, when we dig into the weeds, to use your expression, in September, we'll be able to see if that summer work helped improve, improve.
Exactly, yeah.
If they just stayed neutral, or if they've regressed based just on those numbers, right?
For sure. And one of the things that I, that the teachers have already done, which is quite remarkable with their principals, is they already built their intervention groups. They built them based on the end-of-year data so that the first day of school, once, you know, first day, but like, once you get your systems and routines in, the students can start. And then when they get that beginning-of-year data, they can actually look to make sure that they've got the right kids where they need to be.
That's, that's super important.
I can't tell you how far along this school system is from sitting here five years ago. I cannot tell you. We were not having conversations even remotely close to this. We were arguing with people about STAR, you know, and getting them to use an assessment. And the fact that the teachers already have the RTI groups built, they left the end of the year with those built. And those students have all been placed in summer programs, exactly to your point, Tammy. So that's how those kids were picked. It was based on the outcomes, and then the hope is that our beginning-of-year results should show stronger outcomes for the students, right? Because they've gone through those, that level of intervention.
Now, can you pluck out the people that are just in summer program? Like, can you run a report on, you know, these 10 kids that did accelerated academy or whatever?
Yes.
Well, I like, I think as we look at this data, it's like, we always look at a year. We look at it in chunks of a year, but I don't know that we have ever seen the trend.
Yeah.
I, you know, we always, there's always one grade that's, we're like, whoa, what's going on in that grade? But when that grade goes to the next grade and they're still having an issue, and that grade goes to the next year, it's, we don't, I don't think we think of them as the same kids.
But they are.
But they are.
Yeah.
And when I'm thinking about this small chunk of time from June, summer, then September, I think that's an easier way to look at a chunk of kids to see if what we're doing worked.
I think in.
You know, and it's a lot of money, it's an effort for parents to get kids there during the summer. I'm sure there's a lot of bribery going on, you know, and is it worth it as far as learning?
But it would also be interesting to see if there's any regression from the kids that didn't participate.
Right.
From, from end of year to end of year, second grade, beginning of year, third grade.
Yeah, and, you know, there's going to be some change of kids a little bit.
But we have the data, I'm sure that wouldn't be hard to figure it out.
It would not be hard to do. No, and I'm actually, this is exciting, and this is the stuff I like. So I would love to jump into this. If you want to look at some, we can, we can do that. We can definitely look at, so we still have some programs going on now, and then we have our Acceleration Academy, which we did receive that, it was just under $40,000 grant to do that kickstart for the week before school starts. We've got 10 students in each grade. So we still have programming running right till literally the first day of school, summer programming. But what we can do is, once that all concludes, we can identify whatever that measurement is, whatever that assessment is that we want to use, and we can put some like trend lines together so you can see June, the end of summer, and the BOY data.
Well, I think just using, I mean, if you're using STAR to kind of determine beginning of year, middle of year, end of year here, using STAR after those intervention, various interventions have been put in place, you're comparing, in theory, apples to apples if you're comparing last year's second graders to this year's third graders.
Yep. We certainly can do that. And I can put a report together to share with the committee in the early fall so that we have all that data together, and we have our beginning-of-year data, so you can get a good, you can see a good trend line of where things.
Yeah, and I just think it helps drive, like, you know, if I'm doing ESY, I'm doing ESY right now, if I did a certain units or whatever focus, and then I, then I can use that to drive what we focus on next year as well with, you know? So I think it's helpful.
Well, and the other part that I'm eager to see is when the BOY, when the beginning-of-year testing is done, and we look at the response intervention, those intervention groups, is those are all skill-focused. It's... We don't do like, this is a low, middle, high group. We don't do that. This is the adding fractions to different denominators group, right?
Right.
We do it by skill. So what I'm interested to see is, those students were also put in summer programming for those skills, right? So you would assume that by the time you get to your point, by the time you get to that September, beginning-of-year, you should have narrowed the gap on some of that stuff. Like, that's the point.
Right.
So we can certainly put some trend lines together to see where we fall on that. One of the pieces that... Of data that we do have, which is good, we have only one student that did not pass the summer program that we had in place for our credit recovery. So, you know, a small data point, but that's good. The rest of the students that were enrolled in that, they completed all their ediscier work. We had our teachers on staff to help them, to coach, you know, reteach, that kind of thing, and we only had one student that did not. And it was a participation issue. He just didn't attend after a lot of outreach. So we will keep working with that family for sure. Sarah's working with that family, Sarah Rodriguez. But that's, you know, an anecdotal piece, but it's a good piece.
Is there any way that that end-of-year data can also drive the summer work that all the students are doing? Not necessarily coming in for the programs, but the packets that are sent home? Because it's just such a very basic set of skills.
Generic.
Yeah.
That's a good point. So what I'm hearing you say is customizing, like...
Just use, like, the intervention groupings to kind of push the math skills over the summer.
Yeah, that's a good point. And thank you for mentioning that. One of the things we've had a hard time with, STAR will have a bank of resources for students and teachers to use. What we've found is that, like, the hyperlinks, the links that... They're broken, like, they don't work. So the kids will try to get in there and work on a skill, and the link is broken. So I'm like, eh, you know? So that... Because it's supposed to customize right there for the student. We're looking at, with our new math program, some of you might have heard of this, there is a feature called WAGL, and it's a silly name, but that really speaks to that, like, customization of placement in activities. It's like exactly what you're talking about for math. So that might be a better solution for next year's summer work, but we're still working on that. Because it's a change. So that would replace iXL. And anytime you change something, it's hard. You take a tool and replace it with another tool. It's like, "Ah, I like the other tool," you know? So we're working with the teachers on that transition.
Well, I think what happens too, then you're not comparing apples to apples. So over time, if you don't have this, you know, if you're trying to compare iXL data to what you're doing in WAGL, it's...
It doesn't match.
Can't compare, and you can't tell what's happening.
Exactly. So that transition will be important because then the teacher can look at it, the parent can look at it, and be like, "Oh, okay, this is the lesson you did in math today. And oh, here is your..." Like, what would have been your iXL practice, it's actually WAGL, and it's built into your Intuit Math Model. Like, it just makes sense. It's a partner to that, so.
Sorry.
No, no. This is good stuff. Thank you for these questions. Next is our focus on our equity and inclusion. And this is a really interesting goal for me because this is not something that is like a check-the-box, you know, compliance, yes, we did this, 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 and this. Like, this is hearts-and-mind stuff. This is about creating a system where all students feel that they belong. And, you know, you had an opportunity to look through our survey results, and I'm sure you were able to call out the same patterns and trends that we did, which is it's working better in some places than it is in other places. You know, we saw clearly from the family surveys, we need a reset at the middle school. And I think we're coming into a really good opportunity for that with new leadership. But, you know, that was something that I'm sure you all saw what I saw when you read through the results, that it was clear. And some of it was addressed specifically to scheduling and more of looking at that master schedule, the charger time. Some of it was more so around behaviors. Some of it was more so around the social-emotional learning. I will say, and I know that we've talked about this before, like, there's no pleasing everybody. You know, you saw in the same survey, do less SEL, social-emotional learning work, and then, you know, two columns down, please do more social-emotional learning work, right? In the same building. So it's not about that. It's about trying to provide what the students need and trying to strike that balance. But just so you're aware, all of the principals have their individual survey results. I have met with them to discuss the survey results. They have shared them with their instructional leadership teams and will be part of their opening-year staff meetings the first couple of days. As we've discussed, as a leadership team, there's nothing worse than sending a survey and then not doing anything with the results, right? Your participants are going to say, "Well, stop asking if you're not going to do anything with what I'm sharing with you." So our principals are thinking very intentionally around, how do I respond to this and make sure that we're, you know, with the data that we can, right? With the feedback that we can, making some meaningful changes. Another piece that I wanted to call out for evidence is the Grade 9 Civics Project Summary. I promised those students that I would share that information with you. This was something that they... It was really important to them. And so I had an opportunity to meet with that class of students and really spend... It was actually great. We sat, like, in a big circle, and we had a really rich conversation around the project that they were working on, the survey that they put together. We talked about valid and reliable surveys and sample sizes. I mean, these kids are on point. These are freshmen. We were having this dialogue. It was pretty powerful. And then there was some really good debate in that class about the survey results and what to do with those. And so I'm going to be having more conversations with them. I actually think we can do better than what they asked. They asked for, like, an anonymous Google survey that students can feel out of their feeling that they're being bullied. And we can do that. That's, you know... I think the real work has to come before that, which is, why don't we have a school yet or a system yet where all kids feel like they belong? Because we don't want that type of behavior. Yes, we need a reporting mechanism, but I think we can do better than just a reporting mechanism. But I did want to share that because, A, I promised the students I would, but B, I think it's important information for the school committee to have. The other couple of things that I just thought you might find of interest underneath this particular goal, in July, I did have an opportunity to present a resource guide, which is in the mid-cycle evidence, the Mass Ready Guide. That's been updated since. But I did have an opportunity to present that guide, which is kind of a how-to start building and creating a school system that works for all students. And I'm not going to pretend that we're there yet, and I'm not going to pretend I'm an expert, by the way. That's not the point of this. I'm only sharing that with you because this is really important work for us. And for me as a superintendent, I want every student to know that they're loved, they matter, and they belong here. And so much so that I've taken this work with a small group of superintendents, and we are training other school leaders across the Commonwealth to be able to do that work in their school systems too. As most recently, I ran a leadership training for our neighboring school district yesterday. They had their leadership retreat, and I had the pleasure and honor to work with another district's leadership team for a couple of hours around this work and how to start working on building capacity within their leadership team to help the adults work with the kids in a way that helps everybody feel that they're connected and they belong. I just wanted to highlight those couple of things. And then lastly, the school committee had asked me in my mid-cycle feedback to get back to some of the Facebook Lives. So we did do two. The Facebook Live that I highlighted here, if you go to that on our YouTube page, we've had over 1,600 views. So Jesse's been so helpful because I am terrible at, like, this kind of thing. It was more like a casual, the principals and I sitting around, talking about the year, talking about the work. But it was very informal, and, you know, sometimes superintendents aren't very good in that relaxed kind of... We're a little more like, you know, kind of rigid, I guess. But we'll say... But this was really helpful because I think it gave the community an opportunity to like, "Oh, like, look, they are people, and they're talking like normal people to each other about stuff they like to do and what they're doing over the summer and what this means for our kids." And so I share that as an example to say, "I take your feedback very serious. If you need me to do something different, I just need to hear that." And we'll look at a way or find a way to do that. But this particular Facebook Live got really good results. So we're going to keep trying to use a format that is more in tune with that. Anything on this particular goal before we move on? Our capital planning goal. Let me jump forward. So kind of the headline to this particular goal was to get our short-term capital planning projects in place, which we have started. And as you all know, you approved, graciously approved, a lot of projects for us to get Scott, poor Scott, to get done over the summer months. Been hard at work. Getting these different... You'll hear about it later in the agenda, actually, but getting these different projects in place. But the other was to submit the MSBA Statement of Interest, and I have some wonderful news to share. This evening, I did have a call just before school committee that we have advanced in the process. We have not been fully accepted yet into the pipeline. However, the Mass School Building Authority is going to be moving us on to the senior study phase. That is a very, very good thing. That means we have not been kicked out of the process at that phase. It means they are coming in, and they are going to meet with myself, Scott, and a couple of other team members. They're going to tour the high school. That's a big deal. We need that. We needed that to happen. So while they have not officially invited us in, and there's still a chance that they won't, just the fact that we got to this step is a really good piece of news for us. So we will be notifying the school community tomorrow in a variety of ways and talking to all the people we need to talk to, town administrators, et cetera. But I did want to share. I know we don't usually do surprises, but that was a really good one, so I thought you'd be okay with that.
Well, I think that the proof is in the pudding, so when they come onsite and do their walkthrough, it should really help.
I think they'll see it. And so they want to... What Ms. Flynn from the MSBA, she's a senior project manager, what she and I spoke about today, they're really looking to do two things. They want to see the overall, like, the literal systems and structures of the building, like the boilers. We all know the kind of shape those are in. But then they're very interested in hearing about our teaching and learning plan. And between Ms. Fallis and I, we have that really solid. So I feel very good about this conversation, and I know Scott will be very involved with the facilities tour and really getting deep into the weeds of, you know, the boilers and the roof and the windows and the doors and all the other, you know, systems of the building, the asbestos issues and all of that. And then I think, I hope, when they hear, when they see that, and then they hear about the school we're working on creating and even what we're doing with the space we have, I hope will be a very good thing. So we've got a lot of work to do still, but I was... She really, really pleased that she called today to share the news.
What did you call it? Senior study?
It's called a senior study.
Senior study.
So we've been moved to the senior study phase. I will also tell you that our soon-to-be, we hope, interim business manager has built multiple schools, and the executive board that she worked with at MSBA to do so is the same executive board. She has a fabulous reputation with this committee. So it's not how it works, I know, but it's just good to have that, you know? And I did share this news with her as well. So she was... She's... This is like right up her alley. She's done a lot of work in this space. I'm very pleased about that. Any questions on our capital planning goal? And then lastly, our student learning goal. And the numbers here can make... They make my head spin, so I'm sure I can make anyone's head spin. So I don't want to spend a ton of time walking through each and every one of these numbers, but more so just kind of hitting some of the highlights. And you'll notice that throughout the evidence, I cite this particular piece of evidence because everything we're doing should come back to this. It should come back to how well are our kids learning? That's why they're here. And yes, it's about the whole child, and it's about athletics and music and extracurriculars, and it is, you know, social-emotional growth and all those things. But at the end of the day, we need really good readers, writers, mathematicians, scientists, and thinkers. That's what we're about. So you can see with our ELA results, these are students that the beginning of year to the end of year are meeting and exceeding expectations. If you go to the column all the way to the right, you'll see the difference. We improved in every single grade level. This is the first time that that's happened. So in English Language Arts, while our total percentage of students meeting and exceeding is not where we want it, and frankly, I don't know that we'll ever get to where we want it. We want at least 80% of our kids there. We're not going to stop pushing until we get there. But it's... You can clearly see second grade, third grade, sixth grade. I mean, you can see some strong results. Eighth grade, I mean, those are double-digit increases. So we're pleased to see that our ELA program, that the school committee invested in, our community invested in, is really taking root, and you can see that. One of the pieces I just want to highlight about the middle school, if you look at grade six and grade eight, they went up 11% from... And again, the numbers aren't anywhere where we want them, but they went up 11% from the beginning to the end. That... And just if you might recall, the middle school program we use is Amplify. That program, we picked that because there actually was very little research on it at the time, and very few schools were using it. We actually did a site visit to Niagara Falls Public Schools. You may not remember that, but we did a virtual site visit there. That was built by middle school teachers for middle schools. Like, that was actually built by a group of middle school teachers. That's why we picked that. As you all know, they're kind of the kids in the middle. I have a middle school. I know some of you do too. You know, they're in that kind of age and stage. And so I... It's nice to see that, at least in some places, we're seeing some stronger outcomes with The math results are not as strong collectively. We have more kind of peaks and valleys in our math data. You can see grade two was flat. Grade three showed some progress. Grade four showed some very nice progress. So did grade five. Grade six went backwards a bit. Seventh and eighth grade were basically flat. Ninth grade was flat. Tenth grade went up almost 10 points. So again, somewhat lackluster in some places and really great performance in others. But it can't... We can't have data like that. We don't want this peaks and valleys. We should have this consistent trend line. My hope is, with our implementation next year of Intuit Math, and again, it's a program. Programs don't teach kids. Teachers teach kids. I understand that. But having the right program in the hands does make a difference, and having the elementaries and middle school completely aligned, I'm very hopeful is going to make a big impact in our students' math learning. And the high school is shifting to SAVIS. So not as good results in math as far as consistency goes, but you can see some of the peaks as it relates to some of the valleys. And then these are the students not meeting. And then these are the students not meeting. And these are our ELA results. Seventh grade is the only grade level that went the wrong direction. It went by a couple of points, but still, you know, not, not what we're looking to see. But it is progress in most places. You can see fourth grade, you know, we cut the warning rate essentially in half. We did in fifth grade as well. And then you can see the middle school. Again, we know we need to do a reset, and we are at the prime time for that with new leadership to take that on. I was really happy to see our freshman results. That was a challenging class, just to kind of reset, like how we do school, you know, and them transitioning to the high school for the first time. So they did make some nice results there in terms of reducing those numbers. Mathematics, again, like we saw with the meeting and exceeding, a little lackluster in some places, some peaks and valleys. Some places went up. Some places were flat. Tenth grade, we saw a really nice decrease in students not meeting expectations. But still, a lot of work to do here. And you'll remember, last year, we added for the first time the math interventionist at the elementary level. So we are very hopeful that we continue with those positions. This year, we'll be able to, that with a new core math program and additional training for teachers that come with that, we'll be able to see some positive But speaking of positive results, I think part of our story really needs to be told in our growth. So just to remind everybody what our student growth is, is it takes a student with any score, so, you know, say 400, score of 400, and every single student in that grade that took that test, that scored a 400. And then, when they take the middle of year, it takes all of those kids that were in that cohort, and it looks at your one individual kid and says, how many students did that kid outgrow from that score? So if you look, and I broke it down both ways. I wanted you to be able to see the fall to spring, that's the full year, and then the winter to spring, which is just that half, that second half of the year. But look at the growth rates. Our second-grade students outperformed 72% of second graders that had the same score as them in the beginning of year. Now, remember, the school, the average score is 50. Third grade was at 63, fourth grade 55. I mean, look at the results. We have, and those that have been on the committee for a while, we have not seen growth results like this. As far as consistency goes, not to this level. What I wanted to highlight on this, and I think is very important, is to look at the winter to spring. And I want to bring the sixth grade in, because while the sixth grade overall was still showing, you know, some struggle, they did do some very intentional work in grade six to help target some students that were struggling at the mid-year point from some additional tutoring, after-school help, smaller RTI groups, even, and I really, even where the intervention teacher and the core teacher switched places. And the core teacher took the small group of kids at times, while the intervention teacher, at times, not all the time, but took the class. So that your expert, right, can really sit down with, you know, Dan and Carrie to reteach that, because they have them every day. They know them. So that was nice to see that we saw. But I can't underscore just how proud I am of the growth results that our teachers worked really hard to, to get our kids to. And the kids worked really hard. Math, again, and if you, if you think about the overall achievement, right, that meeting and exceeding, where the numbers were kind of up and down, you'll see more consistency with the growth. And that happens because, you might be wondering, like, well, how does that happen? It happens because you might have a student that is low in the range of partially meeting expectations, right? Say he's one point from not meeting. And then by the time he takes the end-of-year test, he's one point away from meeting expectations. So he's still in the partial, right? He's not meeting yet. So he didn't get over that hump, but he made all of that progress. So his growth is going to be huge. But his achievement percent still looks the same, right? So he's still in another achievement bucket. Does that make sense? So sometimes it can be, you know, be kind of a head scratcher, like, well, when does that happen? But again, the average growth is 50. Look at second grade, third grade. And I, and I also wanted to highlight second grade, because they too were another grade level at, at middle of year that needed to do some very targeted work around content. They were working on a couple of skills with their classrooms that the kids just weren't getting. And the teachers, you know, they kept coming back to them. They were talking to the coach and the principal, like, how do we do this different? How do we get the kids that they're not getting this? So they all huddled up as a team with the coach and principal and came up with a couple of different plans. They did some additional professional development around content, and we saw the outcome. So I wanted to isolate that. I usually don't. But I wanted the committee to be able to see, like, this is what happened in a couple of cases where teachers really pulled together to respond to how the kids were doing. But again, you've got second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, their growth was astronomical. Seventh grade, eighth grade, and 10th grade, all over the 50 marker. Lots to be proud of there. And lots of work to still do. Students with special needs, again, similar structure. This is ELA. We always put the numbers next to the grade level, because the percentages almost don't mean a lot, because the kids change during the year in terms of who is in the program, who tests out of the program. But what we did do for this was we actually left the same students in. So you could see the same kids for BOY all the way to EOI. So these 11 kids started and ended, and were in the same, like, that same cohort model. And here, where, again, the percentages aren't stellar, and they're not where we want them to be, and I don't want to gloss over this, because I, I don't want anyone to think I'm, I'm not, you know, trying to focus on the achievement, because I am. The growth that the students made, again, is unlike growth we have seen before for our students with special needs. So I'd like to skip to the growth chart to show you that. This is ELA. Look at the growth that our students are making. These are just our students with special needs. Again, 50 is the target, and think about all students, right, that we just looked at. These are just those kids that we pulled out of those groups. So Tammy, to your question, like, can you build a cohort in there and isolate the students? We can. And that's how the students are doing.
So these are the same 11 students through these?
Yes. In second grade, I think it was 11 in second grade.
Yeah.
Or 12. Yep. Whatever the number was. 20 in third grade. It's those same kids.
Because the reality, if a kid is not meeting at the beginning of the year, but then is meeting for several data points later, potentially, they can exit.
They might come out, right.
Not being a student without, with special ed, with special ed needs.
And that's been a conundrum for years, is like, those students, we're like, do we, do we put them in there? Because we've, like, we've, we've exited them. So year after year, our data looks how it looks, but we don't, we don't incorporate the students that exited. But what I wanted to show with the data, this kind of go-around, is look at the growth the kids made. These are the same students. So this, to me, is, there's a lot to celebrate here. Look at the eighth grade, this ninth grade, the 10th grade. I mean, the, this is very significant in terms of the progress the students are making. And our special education teachers, we had interim, Tammy, you mentioned this earlier, like those, like those benchmarks, those check-ins. We had in between our beginning, middle, and end-of-year meetings, our data meetings with everybody, Jill and I met with our special education teams in between those to do progress monitoring, to check in on every single, these students, these numbers, these 12, these 20, these 26, we literally discussed all of those kids, like individually, looked at their growth, looked at their plans, looked at the interventions, and looked at what we need to do different. And the teachers were awesome. The special education team was just awesome to connect with on this. And look at the outcome. So not with the achievement is yet, but the growth. And Tammy, to your point, when the kids are at that achievement level, we're probably not going to see them in here anymore, right? Because they shouldn't be. At some point, they're going to exit. Not immediately, but at some point.
Yeah. I mean, it's what happens with, when we talk about graduation for students with special education needs. What happens is they, hopefully, you're doing what you're supposed to do, and they make improvements, and then they exit. So they don't have an IEP when they graduate, because they met their goal in 11th grade or 12th grade along the way. But then it looks, your graduation number looks bad, but it's like, well, yeah, but these other eight kids that are in that graduation, graduating class also had an IEP for three of the four years they were at high school. So it's like, that's when these numbers, this, this conversation helps understand what it actually is.
Right.
So, thank you.
No, thanks for bringing that up. And then math. Again, it's not as consistent as ELA, but you can see in some grades, it was stronger. The elementary level, the growth rates for our students with special needs was very strong. Sixth grade was just, just a hair above average. Seventh grade was very low. Eighth grade was low. Our freshmen were low, and our 10th graders did very well. Any questions on the data before we move forward? I know there's a lot of numbers there.
I'll just clarify, though. So those, these look very promising.
They do, yeah.
But for this, for the student learning goal, we are waiting for?
MCAS. Yep. Yes, we are.
The way the goal is written.
Yes. Yep. So those results are embargoed. We, so what, what we have received so far are essentially just a list of standards, and whether or not, and each one of those standards at every grade level we tested, we fell above or below the state. So we have very raw data, which we've already poured over. The principals have met with their ILTs about it. I've met with the principals about it. So we already know where we're at. The embargoed, actual, like, performance and growth results, we think should be out to schools and districts by next week. But we were all waiting for last Tuesday. They were supposed to release the cut scores. So you get a bunch of raw scores, and then usually, cut scores come with it, so you can hand calculate on your own, like your achievement levels. So I usually do that for each one of the schools. I go grade by grade for both subjects. But they didn't release it this year. And then it was supposed to be released Tuesday, and it never came out Tuesday. So I had put in all the principals' calendars to be mindful and check their, their Dropbox and their Department of Ed portal, but we got an email saying it wasn't coming out. So I don't know if it's going to be released this Tuesday, like it's supposed to be. I have no idea. But that embargo will be in place most likely. I think Erin, you had said in your email, like, sometime in the end of September, it usually come out. And then I'll do a public presentation of that early October, and then the school committee will finish their evaluation of me on that. And I just added this last slide, because this was what I had placed in there, my middle-of-year report. So I wanted to just highlight, in terms of the next steps, underneath professional practice goal, that is complete and in place. Underneath goal two, district improvement, that was the modifying the learning outcomes and the interventions and all the stuff that we have talked about. All that work's done for this school year, and now we're looking through our summer data and waiting for our MCAS results. The training for our math program has started. We did that. We launched all of that in the spring. So our teachers have already been trained, at least initial. We had a launch on our new math program, which is awesome. So they left with materials and an overview, and really had some, had some time to get their arms around it. Goal three, that, that particular action step and getting that in place for this year with Teachers 21 is complete and in place. And of course, the capital planning, you know, where, where that fell out in terms of being invited into the senior study. And that is my evaluation.
That is a lot. But I will thank you for the organization of this. Very thorough, and it is a lot of information. We fortunately have had it in our hands since July 19. So I'll just make sure everyone knows, I did send an email earlier today with the Google form that we will be using to collect all of our evaluations on, on Jason's evidence as he presented it today. I am asking if you could take some time by the end of this weekend, while it's fresh, to get the pieces done that we have evidence on. So I've left the student learning goal empty for now, and we will go back to that. I'll reopen the same form in October, once he presents the MCAS to us. But if we could get the bulk of it done by the end of this weekend, that would be great. I did attach a few other pieces to the email, just for reference, and a copy of his, of his presentation, which we did have in our email, but it should all be here for you to access. But if you have any questions, you can email me over the weekend, too, and I'd be happy to help. Erin, if you want to sit, because I know you missed the workshop on the evaluation, I can make some time for you, if you let me know when you have time, and I will happily.
Aye. Thank you.
Let you, we can go through Wendy's presentation, if you want, so you know what you're actually looking at for readings and stuff.
Okay. The business office report, you will notice that we did not include the financial reports, the expenditures and revenues. That is because, we have them, so you certainly, if anybody wants to see, you can certainly share those. We decided to wait till August 25th to the next meeting, because we're still trying to finalize the report that will be generated from the system itself. Where we got it to now is the itemized report, which is like 16 pages. And I don't think you all, maybe you want to look at that, I don't know. But what we're trying to do is find a way in budget sense to do the, like the line item report that you typically see with the revenues. I, I want to move away from exporting that, putting it into a spreadsheet, move, I mean, when you do that, anybody can do anything with the numbers. I want something system-generated, particularly as we're in this transition. I just think it's really important to have a system-generated report. Tried and true, that you just hit print and it comes right out of our financial system. So right now, the place Ron and I have this, and we just looked at it Tuesday, is, it's, it's a long report. So we're trying to find a way to condense those.
Maybe our new interim will have a recommendation on that.
Yeah, I definitely hope so. Because I'm trying to find a way to condense it. And what Ron did put together was helpful, but he exported it into a spreadsheet and moved the lines around. And like, I don't, I want to get away from that, so that we've got something right from the financial system itself. So I hope everyone is okay with that. But if you are anxious or eager and you want to see now, I certainly, just let me know, and I can, I can generate the report and get you a copy. If not, we'll have it at the August 25th meeting. That way, we're not changing report after report after report. Thank you for that, Erin. That was a good suggestion. So you have, in your packet, two pieces for your business office update. You have a personnel report, and you have a school vacancy update. What I wanted to do, because at the last meeting, it was requested by the committee that we get a full list of resignations and retirements, and, so what I did was, I put, so you would have it all together, because these are all in your individual packets, because we report this to the committee and the community every month. But you can see June 1st, July 1st, and August 1st, what our resignations, retirements, and appointments are. But what I did was, I put them at the top of a sheet titled Personnel Overview, June 1st to August 1st. And I built a table by category, so you can see Unit A and Unit C. And I just summarized the data that's on those sheets, so you'd have it in one place, and it would be easier to consume. So you can see in Unit A, from June 1st to August 1st, we had two retirements. From June 1st to August 1st, we had seven resignations, and we had 13 appointments. And then Unit C, we had zero retirements, five resignations, and three appointments. I just want to remind you, it does not include the non-renewals, and we already talked about all that. But I just wanted to put that out there. So this is the full count from, and, you know, we can go as far back as you want to go back. You have all of those individual reports in your school committee packets. But I know that there was a request that we could get this information all in one place. So it's there. And then I put the backup data behind it, if you wanted to go back and double-check any of the, the numbers. Underneath that is a report of our current vacancies. I shared, I think, in an update Sunday morning, that the challenge we're up against now is, we've filled the same position one case three times. They keep taking it. We onboard them. We get their ID, their badge, their keys. We train them. They quit. They found something, you know, five minutes closer to home for $2,000 more. It is, I cannot, I've never seen it like this before. I've absolutely never seen it like this before. The number of times we're filling the same positions is, so anyhow, where we are for the high school, we have a science teacher vacancy. We just had a resignation last week. A computer science vacancy, we had a resignation last week. Oh, I'm sorry, the technology teacher was last week. The computer science teacher we hired failed train. She met with me, met with the principals, saw her space, and then she quit two days later for a job making $4,500 more. So we're back at the drawing board with that position. I guess contracts don't mean anything to people, I guess. We have one Spanish vacancy at the high school, but we are working with a finalist for that. And we have one paraprofessional vacancy. So I will tell you, at one point, we only had a Spanish vacancy. Like, everything else was filled. So I don't want the committee to think that anyone's asleep at the switch on this.
I will, I will just say that this looks marvelous compared to what my world looks like right now, especially this paraprofessional number.
It's, it's just...
I think, I think my district, in my building, I probably am short, like, six paraprofessionals right now at the high school level.
Yeah.
And that's not district. District is even worse. So we're doing pretty good.
Yeah. And I, the number of, and just all of us, the principals, but I interview every single finalist. And I've spent, I mean, weeks interviewing people at this point. So it's just, if I'm wearing a little bit of that, I apologize. It's, like, we just put so much time into this, and we're so intentional about who we bring on board and how we are onboarding them and training them. And so, but I have the utmost faith in Ms. Fallis. She's working around the clock to fill these. We're helping her. We're recruiting. We have it out on ND, School Spring. School Spring has some great features, so we actually send emails to people. We are like, oh, hey, we see that you have a science license and that you, you know, you're in the area. You interested in interviewing for a science position? So we're actually, you know, at this point, we're poaching. I mean, we're trying to find people that are in positions and take them, frankly. The middle school, we, again, this science position was filled. The teacher decided to go to a different school system, actually, completely different than ours. She's going to Boston. But we did have that filled. The math interventionist, we also had filled. She also resigned to work in her town. The school adjustment counselor, that's the position that's shared with the high school. We have made a couple of offers on that, and then exceptions in two different cases. They didn't, they weren't, they weren't hired. They weren't like, on They weren't, they weren't hired, they weren't like onboarded, but then they withdrew. And then the Spanish vacancy came from the middle school Spanish teacher interviewed and applied for the high school, one of the high school positions. And Tanya and Jill, Ms. Fallis spoke and decided that the transition would be, you know, would be good, so that that teacher is moving to the high school, so we'll be finishing, filling the vacancy, one of the vacancies here. And the elementary schools are filled, with the exception of one position. Go ahead.
Is there an option, does it have to be Spanish?
No.
Are we, are we opening that up?
If we can, the challenge will be, is we don't offer anything but at the high school. So if we offered French here, if we all want to put French into our budget and hire a French teacher, or Portuguese, or Italian.
Well, we have an opening for foreign language, so to me, that would be.
Oh, the foreign, I'm sorry, Erin, I misunderstood. The foreign language opening at the high school has to be Spanish, because of the sections of kids that need it.
Right.
Is that, I apologize, I thought you were talking about the middle school.
Well, and they need it, because that's all we've ever offered.
Well, we've offered French at some point.
But if the opportunity, if we, we did, we cut, we lost it.
Yes.
Right.
But if, I mean, maybe we would be able to have another opportunity if.
This is where our small size hurts us, because then you have six people taking.
Yeah.
You're using, you're paying a teacher to teach basically six kids for four years.
But right now, everyone is forced into that one language. So maybe the middle school opportunity could be something different, and that way, it isn't, I mean, but we're offering Spanish 1.
I was gonna say, was that value, or is there no value in that?
Just trying to expand the options.
It's not a bad idea, but just the challenge is, Tammy, to your point, it's the numbers, but the other part that's hard.
It's a four-year commitment.
Yeah, and you've got, you have kids in transition. So you've got a student, or a group of students that took Spanish 1. Now the teacher that would have taught them Spanish 2 is teaching French. And they're like, ah, general say. Right? Like, they can't take the class. They don't speak French. So we gotta think, there's a way out of that, it's just a transitional plan.
I mean, and the issue, you know, further extends to the college level, because if you don't have the two years consecutive, then, then you're hurting the, you know, your enrollment into the college piece. So you can't take a year off and then say, okay, we'll offer Spanish again, like, you can't.
Or would the opportunity be there, if, if there are enough freshmen to give them another, right now, they're all signed up for Spanish, because that was all we had. So how many are Spanish 1 first-year kids, truly, that could possibly take another language, schedule-wise?
I'd have to look at that, yeah.
I'm assuming the schedules are built, assuming, these are all filled.
Yes, yeah.
So that Spanish position at the high school is a third? We have two?
We have three.
And that would be three?
We have Jean Rydel, Solie Beth Bravo, and then the vacancy.
Right.
Yep.
So that would be the third teacher?
Right.
And then the, that's because the middle school teacher moved in.
Right. It just moved the vacancy to another school, essentially.
With the Acceleration Academy taking Spanish 1 at the high school, does that allow for a shared position at all between buildings?
It does. Yep, it does. We've looked at that, and we are, we are.
Not ideal, but.
But it's, it's possible. The challenge, the nuance is the block that that teacher has available here is H-block, which is the last period.
And its first block.
In its first block at the high school.
Yeah.
So every six days, that will line up. So we were able to lock the schedule for the Grade 8 Academy students.
Yeah.
Without any problems. If we share that staff member, it's going to cause a problem with the rotating schedule and this schedule being locked. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
I know. It sounds like it would be easier to fix than it is.
It's not.
And then you get into the weeds of it, and it's like, oh, you know, it's, there's actually a lot of challenges to it. But we are committed to working on that, and we'll look at that expansion, and I don't know if it's possible there, but. So that is what the vacancies are, those are the vacancies, excuse me, at the middle school, and then at the complex in Millville, they're just filling a reading specialist that they are sharing. The rest of their positions are filled. I also would like to share, as the committee, regarding the non-renewals, we had one that, there was a licensure issue, you might remember, at the elementary level, that completed all of her requirements. So we were able to bring her back. So we're very excited about that. She's really very good with the students. Questions on the vacancies or the personnel reports? The personnel reports to be received and placed and filed, but anything on the vacancies?
No questions? Moving on to facilities?
All right. Facilities report, just quickly, MSBA has shared the good news. September 14th, at 1:00, they will be joining us at the high school. There will be a small group of them, a small group of our team. And I can, I can assure you, without certain, without any level of uncertainty, we will be ready for their arrival. And we will communicate thoroughly with the, with the school district community as soon as tomorrow, all the information.
Is it worthwhile to give an update to the capital planning, I was pointing like to Sarah over there, to that group to just kind of get ideas, or whatever?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep, nope, that's a really good point.
Especially seeing as some of those folks are the, are sitting board members in, in various towns, in the two towns. But I think it helps to kind of continue to keep them in the loop for the conversations that happen outside of school committee.
Definitely. So I'll be sure to add that. Also, I'll write something for the, the submission date for the enlightener is August 22nd, so I'll write something for the enlightener, too, to make sure that gets in there. And we'll notify all parties of that. That good news.
And we can also bring them up to date on what's been going on with the driveways and the playgrounds, and bring them up to speed.
Absolutely. Speaking of which, Mr. Hebert.
I'm not sure if anybody noticed, but the repaving of the driveway has begun at the middle school. And that should be wrapped up by Monday, the latest. They're gonna start putting the top coat on it tomorrow. They're expecting to get three-quarters of it done tomorrow. So that's moving right along. At the high school, the asbestos work began at the beginning of July, and it was wrapped up to the end of July, July 30th. We're just waiting for the Department of Labor Standards to come in and do a file inspection. They may and may not come in, it's at their discretion. As long as the work was done, the reports are filed by Universal Environmental Consultants with the Department of Labor Standards, and if they so choose to come inspect it, they The LED lighting program is, has begun and is just about completed at the high school. They started that actually on Monday, but because it's only phase 1, it's a limited area that they're doing. They looked into doing the auditorium, but they're concerned with if they change the lighting, recessed lighting, it may affect the dimmer switches for the spotlights and all that. So they're choosing not to do that, and they're gonna focus more on lights in the hallways instead.
I was in the cafeteria this week and noticed a difference.
Super bright.
And, and they weren't even all on, but then someone showed me, but it was great.
Yeah. And they're just about wrapped up at their JFK, too. They got a couple more fixtures they gotta change out, but. Back to the high school. So the sand for the long jumps has been replaced. I got 20 yards of new sand from Kimbo Sand and Gravel. Right now, it's a little overfilled, because I was hoping we'd get some heavy rain and maybe pack it down. You know, I don't want to take out too much right now, but I still gotta go back, clean it up, and make it look pretty. We are getting two storage sheds delivered tomorrow, 10x20s, for the equipment for the track and field, and also football, to store their stuff in. So expecting those tomorrow. I did call them today, and they are scheduled to be delivered tomorrow. And the circulator pump for the heating system was replaced. So the heating system, with the exception of the heating coil up in the ceiling on the second floor, is set to go. They're coming back to do that sometime next week. Any questions on the high school? Middle school, we covered, the driveway's just about completed. It's 10 times better than what it was, the way it is now. So JFK, the playground, ProBuild has come out to do another survey. It's looking like it's gonna require more work than anticipated. Dr. DeFalcone and myself met with them, and we're trying to figure out the best way to keep all the existing equipment that we have now, but consolidating it to a smaller area. So it'll be less work to maintain it and less financially to complete the project. That being said, the playground for the back of the AF Maloney side, they said is in really good shape. It's just a matter of cleaning it up, cutting some of that fabric that's sticking up, and putting down some new wood chips, wood fiber chips. I also reached out to another company called UltraPlay, which is actually right down here at Main Street, and they came out, looked at it, gonna give us a second quote, just to make sure, you know, we're getting our bang for our buck. And they agreed that, yeah, the JFK playground is the one that needs the most attention. And like I said, the lighting program, the LED lighting project is just about completed at JFK, with the exception of a few fixtures that they want to change out. Any questions with JFK AF Maloney? All right. So the Millville Elementary School, I'm still waiting on a second quote from UltraPlay, too, on that. But they agreed that the playground on the softball field is in excellent condition. It's just a matter of taking up the masks that are there, because they are becoming a tripping hazard, and some of the plastic is broken on them. Lot of the spikes are sticking out of the ground. So they said the best bet is to remove those, break the wood chips back into place, and add a fresh coat on top of it, and then compact it. And clean up the walkway that leads to it. The pre-K playground in the back also requires a lot of attention. Looks like we're finally getting some rain. So, yeah, so they suggest that we take all the p-stone out of there, we gotta move either the fence or the slide over by one foot to make it ADA compliant, and apply a new layer of wood fiber chips. But they said that one's in good condition, other than the p-stone. And the sidewalk work was completed, they filled in all the cracks, built a new walkway to the auditorium to help make that ADA compliant as well. And that is the facilities report. Any questions?
So I was contacted by the CPAC in regards to our conversation about the wood fiber, and knowing that, we did verify that it is ADA compliant. They're asking if we would get quotes for a poured surface. And so I don't know how, they're saying poured-in-place rubber surface versus the wood chips. Is the company we're getting those from, do they provide other surfaces, or would we have to seek another company to get that quote?
So ProBuild had actually suggested doing a pouring place around the slides at JFK as well. They did say it's quite expensive. But I will get a quote to have it done. Maybe we can approach the town sources.
Yeah.
I never caught up with you when you.
I missed that email. As soon as you said that, I thought she, she said, I didn't see it. I mean, I saw it, but I didn't, I didn't read it yet. I'm glad you said that. I missed that.
I think we should do our due diligence. We, we do know that the chips are ADA compliant, but at least if we can look at it from their point of view and have the options in front of us, I think that's the right thing to do.
You want to do that for both playgrounds? At Millville?
Yeah. For, well, this email is asking for all of, all of our playgrounds, so.
Okay.
If we're doing the two in Millville, we should get the quote for, so you're saying condense the larger playground now, and that would make it a smaller area that we'd have to surface?
Right.
Is that the purpose of condensing? Because even replacing the.
Yeah, what they were talking about was actually taking that swing set that is the furthest away and moving it closer. Maybe removing one of the tire swings, but keep the double one and move that closer as well.
Okay.
They want to bring the footprint in.
Yeah.
Yeah, which would make it a smaller surface to have to cover, even if it's wood fiber.
It's just, it's that, the cost is.
What do you do with the rest?
Moving the equipment.
I mean, if, if, looking at, and I'm horrible with, like, this, I need a picture, but currently, when you're looking at the playground, if you're standing on the street, the swing set is like where Scott is for me, and like Ted's the gazebo thing. The wood, isn't there a slide over there on that side?
Well, he's saying pull it in, and then.
Pull the slide in, too?
There would probably be more grass.
Yep.
So they're talking, they're talking more about the swing set that is closer to the kindergarten section, where the sandbox is.
Oh, to the right.
And the geodome, they want to take that one, move it in, and take the tire swings that are closest to the street and pull them up as well.
Oh, so not the big set that's where you are?
Nope.
In the scheme of things, okay.
Nope.
Because I would think the side, the, the other, I mean, I don't know, I don't know. I mean, what are you gonna do, anyway? Then you have to plant grass and pay for that. Either way, you have to do something.
Yes.
You can't just leave these random wood chips in the middle of nowhere, right?
Talking about building a, an earth berm, I guess you could call it, they were talking about trucking in 200 yards of fill, and then putting them on top of that and planting grass. There's actually like, I think it was a four-foot height difference, just from where the asphalt is.
Sloop.
The basketball court, down.
One of the things they discussed was like building this tier with a wall, and it was, we were like, that's, that's gonna be an apparatus. You have a wall with a four-foot jump, the kids are gonna be jumping off of it, like, you can't, there's gotta be a way to, otherwise, you're gonna keep washing all that.
It's a sloop.
P-stone chips, whatever you're putting there.
Right.
What you're saying, Scott.
So it's Sarah, Sarah Peters that came in and presented a donation to us, she's the one that sent the email. And she ended her email with, having ADA-accessible inclusive playgrounds is our, in our district, as well as our community, is a big priority for CPAC. And I would certainly say it is a priority for us, too, which is why we were.
But it is.
We verified that the wood chips would be, yes.
So, so we're already compliant with ADA.
So it's not that we don't want it to be, right.
Okay.
But we do also have to, we want them to be, which is why we're doing this.
We want the Cadillac, not the Pinto of requirements, is what we're saying, right?
We're, we're going to make sure they're ADA-accessible and compliant.
But we have already done that.
Yes.
I just want to make it clear.
Yes.
To me, it sounds like we're saying we want it to be, but what Scott has already said is, it is currently ADA-compliant with wood chips.
The wood chips will, yeah, so some of us are, some of them need to be.
They're just asking that we explore all the options.
Yes, I understand, I just want to clarify that.
That is what we want also, and it is what we will have.
But we are.
Yes.
JFK is not ADA-compliant to where it is.
Because the p-stone, right.
But we are, the, the wood chips are, which is why we were moving in that direction.
Okay.
Yeah, to me, that email just sounded like she wanted, when we come to the final decision with all of the numbers in play, I think she wanted.
I haven't read the email. I don't know if we, did we get that email?
Well, no, just, just what Erin read. It sounded to me like she just wants to make sure that when it's presented to the committee to vote on, that we have, replacing what's currently there, which is ADA-compliant with the wood chips. But we could do this, and this is the price difference.
Didn't, do we already, we already voted on the wood chips, right?
Yes.
Okay, just to clarify, yeah.
We did.
It's already been voted on.
Yes.
Okay. So we're just asking for quotes for a different surface.
Dan?
I'm just, I just need to refresh my memory. Like, these are town-owned buildings, and what's the deal with the playgrounds? Is it a responsibility of the school district, or?
Under the lease. I think when it becomes a certain dollar amount.
Between parks and rec and the school?
Well, the, right, but the.
Anything over a certain dollar amount is responsibility.
Under a certain dollar amount, we usually, but that's why we took these on as capital conversations.
Okay.
If they were over that amount, we would bring them to the towns, to, to town meeting for capital expenses. But we already put this money, we already.
Which I understand.
Yeah.
I just think that this is, so the, these playgrounds are on town-owned property, and I understand the under, over $25,000 in repairs falls on the school or the towns, and, but these playgrounds are open to the public. And, but these playgrounds are open to the public, you know, for the, both, in both communities. And, and, and I understand the schools take, the districts taking the lead on maintaining and trying to upgrade these things. This, and I didn't hear what you said, but was, was Sarah asking for a price on rubberizing, poured rubber on, on, on these playgrounds? Is that what the request was? I didn't hear what you had said, Scott.
She's asking if the school committee would get quotes for what it would cost to do a poured in place rubber surface versus the proposed wood chips that we did already say that we verified were ADA compliant.
So that would, in my estimation, on those, and, and she references both the, the districts, the two towns, the school district, as well as the parks very in town. So that price would bring it to the towns.
Right.
That would bring it, that would definitely bring it to the towns. It wouldn't, cause it would be over the twenty-five, a twenty or twenty-five thousand.
It would slow down our project and we would, if it becomes something that we wanted to pursue over the wood chips, it would have to go to town meeting for capital.
Pretty much be the town's responsibilities at that point to do, to do so.
We can certainly get the quotes and, you said that it was recommended around the slides, but they didn't give a cost at this point?
No, we're still waiting on that.
I gotta, I'll go ahead, Ted.
I was just gonna ask and, you know, I don't know if there's, considering the, you know, the current severe drought that we're in and as I'm driving by the football field and I see it as, just like high lawns brown as can be and gold, whatever you want to call it. Has there been any internal discussions about athletics going into the fall, if this continues the way it is? Cause all it would take is one game or whatever and that field would be chewed up and I think would be on repair.
And in the track, you're talking about?
Yeah. Talking about, yeah.
If they're not, isn't it sprinklers?
Irrigation is running, but it's just not-
I don't think it's, can stay with the, the pace of the weather.
I actually turned it on yesterday during the day too, seeing how it was cloudy and stuff. I ran each zone for like ten minutes just to try to get a smidge of water. That's why we put a sign out there saying, well, water in case anybody drives by.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
The only reason I say it is if it stays like this and, and you can't stay ahead of it. Maybe there needs to be some internal conversations with other schools and hey, if, if somebody has a turf field and they can exchange and say, hey, we'll, we'll host you next year. If we can go to you guys just so we can save, save some of these fields. Cause I don't, I just think one game on, whether it's soccer or whatever it might be.
And they're actually, now that you're mentioning that, the last few nights that I've been at band camp, there's like captain's practices going on up there. It's probably another field they could be using for that. Since it's-
I'll talk to the AD about it.
But they are inside the track.
Are the sprinklers running in the morning, Scott? Like, when do they typically run?
Overnight.
Overnight, okay.
There's so many zones up there, the sprinkler system can't keep up with it. So it's programmed to run like for a half an hour and then it shuts down for like a half an hour to rebuild. And it's the same thing with the one down on the soccer field. It's just, there's so many zones down there, cause there's a lack of water.
Which is so-
They look, they both look a lot better than my front yard.
Yeah.
You can see in the bottom fields, we just were running on them yesterday, the green patches, you know, you can see, you can see where the water is reaching.
You can pick out where every sprinkler head is because that just gets so much water from the head popping up and rotating. You can see, there's a green ring around them.
I've got a question to bring up about sidewalks. It's probably something to talk to the town about, but so on, at the JFK complex, around the playground on the Menden Street side, that sidewalk needs to be replaced. It's really bumpy. It's got like a big divot, a pothole. I, I saw a kid driving his bike down and he, you know, head over heels.
Oh, really?
You know, yeah, he came off his bike.
Yeah.
So right past the intersection with Lincoln Street, that little stretch, it's only from there to the driveway.
Yeah, it's all ripped up over there.
Yeah, that little section. And then there should be a sidewalk from Main Street to this school. Really dangerous corner, coming up Federal Street. Right, from Main Street coming up Federal Street to the school. Very, the traffic, there's-
And kids do walk it and bike it every day?
There should be a plan in place to eventually put a sidewalk in.
I think there, there is. There's been discussion about that recently, very recently. And I think it's part of the ongoing, you know, ongoing plan. And I, there may even been discussion of a grant. It's been discussed, I know for a fact, very, very, like within the last three or four months.
There's one that goes up, is there some that starts going up by the tire place or there's no sidewalk there either? None, none all the way up?
Wasn't that part of Mike Soder's thing that he got us?
That's on Canal Street, but I know, I'll have to go back and look, but that's, we brought it up a few years ago. And then COVID hit and, and I know that it, I know for a fact it came up very recently on a bunch of areas identified.
I don't know if you have communication or that would be you, just bring it up.
We definitely can, oh, yeah, yeah, we can mention it to-
Jimmy would love to hear from us.
We can mention to Dorian, Jimmy.
I know Jimmy's answer already.
Jimmy, Jimmy would love to hear from us.
We used to walk uphill both ways in the snow.
That little gazebo, that needs a little attention at the JFK.
Okay.
Take a look inside there, I sat in it last week.
Yeah.
Just a little carpentry, get it now before it's out of control.
If I could, when, when I went, actually on my way back here, and I'll talk to Parks and Recs, the shrubs around it and things can be cleaned up a little bit too, they're kind of overgrown on that, on that. You're talking about the gazebo at the corner of Main and, sorry, Menden and Lincoln?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was donated to Mr. Bevel's son.
Yes.
Our next capital committee date, but if, I mean, that's definitely something you could join and bring up when we, when we do come back together, the capital planning.
I think the sidewalks have never really been pushed over the years because we bus every student. So, you know, unlike other districts where you have a mile and a half walking distance or, you know, whatever. We, nobody walks to school, even the kids that live on Dawn Street across the street.
I'm really surprised though, Rocco Drive, that when that was put in and the school was put in, that there was not ever a sidewalk and a crosswalk put over.
Cause they don't walk? They're not required, they're not required to walk. They only walk if their parents want them to.
I do remember that was a discussion when the building was, had opened. And superintendent at the time said, we bus them from here to Rocco Drive. There's no need for a sidewalk.
Right. I remember that same conversation, like I said, Dawn Street is right across from the complex and, you know, there were lots of conversations about fences over there and cross guards and over the years. But it's, you know, the answer is always, we bus them from the door to there across the street.
And nothing's ever happened, so why do it until something does happen and then?
Knock on wood, Scott, please.
There was never a sidewalk on that Lincoln Street Bridge until we put a new one in.
Looks good then.
I mean, for all those years, it's-
It's great for runners.
Crazy.
Yes, it is.
That was a narrow, narrow bridge.
The other rest, I'll tell you the what, it's dangerous to run around here. The rest of the roads are very unsafe. My little group have only gone up to the high school, cause I don't want to take them out anywhere else. I've run up all of these streets and it's-
I think and that's part of the issue, right, Jason? I mean, they're so narrow that you have to start taking people's property and no one wants to push it because they don't want to give away their property.
Yeah, I can, I can see that.
Any other facility pieces for us?
No.
Good updates, Scott.
Yes, great.
Chuck had expressed concern with the cross-country trails and we've cleaned those up. Last year, the ones at the back of the high school were pretty ruddy because the lawnmower got stuck down there and then we had to go down there with the truck and the truck got stuck and, yeah, so. I took the tractor last Saturday and went down there and smoothed it all out.
Thank you.
Should be good.
Ready for the runners.
Hope so.
So this-
Have you run it since, Jason?
Mm-hmm, I've been down there.
Yeah, the course at this school, I think last year they, they didn't have any home meets for middle school cross-country. And I guess because the trails had cut through the, someone else's property. So they just, instead of coming up with an alternative course on this school ground, they just gave up. I don't, so when I say they, who, who is that, the coaches or whatever, the athletic director? So I don't think we've run a home course here at this school since nineteen, two thousand nineteen.
Yeah, cause I've seen, I've been to those, right over here.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, there should be a new course where made for this school, so you don't have to bus, you know.
Over to the high school.
We can host meets here instead of going away for every meet.
Yep, I can talk to the AD about that too.
Yeah, so the trails on that side of the property ran on somebody else's property.
So I'm not-
On this side, I'm fine.
My kids have run these trails and, you know, but I'm not really familiar with them.
And we got a complaint?
We didn't get a complaint, but I guess, I don't know, I think it was Alan may put a stop to it because if somebody gets injured on somebody else's property, it's probably a liability.
Nineteen wasn't Alan?
No, it wasn't.
I don't know. It's a, it's a three K race for middle school.
Yeah.
So we can fit, put a course on this, I don't know who would-
It's not in a very far distance to do.
Is there a cross-country, Peland?
Yeah, yeah, coach, yeah.
Reinstate the old course, that's all.
Yeah, I don't know what happened to that.
Yeah, I don't know. I thought it was lack of, of students that they-
No, they were running at the high school instead of here. It's the high school that has the lower numbers.
Yes, the high school.
The middle school teams.
I don't even know if the high school have a team.
But they did practice up here, cause I remember my nephew was running up here.
Jason, another note for the athletic director. Can we send back out the information about the tryout start on the twenty-second? But include location for each sport? I know several teams have wondered, cause they can't all start on the twenty-second at eight AM on the football field. So just to-
Yeah. That would be tricky.
Yeah.
Bring your water bottles to water the lawn first, right Ted?
Every bit helps.
So I did meet with a, a company to align the fields too. And we talked about, you know, we're gonna line the, the lowest soccer field as well. And then have the football practice field off the left side of it.
Great.
Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, are they gonna, I don't think they're gonna be playing soccer games up on the track?
Yeah, all teams will have an opportunity to play up there, soccer field, hockey and football.
Yep.
All right.
All right, so moving on to school committee forum. Does anyone have any pieces they'd like to share?
Nope.
Nope. So we all got the invite for the cookout at band camp. Did everyone see that for this Saturday evening? It's a five PM cookout, we're invited every year. And then they have a mini show at seven o'clock, standing outside of the track, outside of the fence. But looking over on the parking lot. I know the kids have been very appreciative of, of you being around serving dinner. And Ms. Fallis has been there handing out popsicles. It has been a little easier week, weather-wise, but I think they just got doused in rain. And if you can't make the Saturday night, they do, do, they do a run-through every night at the end of band camp. So even tomorrow night around seven thirty, you'd catch what they've worked on all week. But I know they look forward to seeing extra faces there on, and even for anyone listening. Seven PM on Saturday night this, this weekend, you can catch a glimpse of our marching bed. Our next school committee meeting is August twenty-fifth at six PM here. And I believe we are moving to executive session. We'll, not to return, so we will, we'll call into executive session and adjourn our meeting from there. Erin?
Okay. Yes.
Erin, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Carrie? All right, thank you.